Up to this point in time, some of the successes that we've had, maybe some of the challenges we've had, also take a look at a little bit about the future, particularly in 2014, what the goals are, what some of the activities are. I think I'm going to introduce, first of all, John Fitzpatrick, our Assistant City Manager, sitting in place of Mr. Roloff, who's on vacation, a well-earned vacation this week.
Yes, yeah, thanks Mayor.
And I'll ask John to introduce our guest.
I'm happy to introduce our guests. We have Shelley Reinecke and Bill Wyman, and they've been working hard on a variety of different projects with Neighborhood Works, and as the mayor said, we're pleased to have them here, and they're going to just give us an update on what's going on.
Well, thanks for having us. Shelley, take over.
All right. Yeah, thanks for having us, taking the extra time tonight to let us talk neighborhoods with you a little bit. And I'd like to just take a quick opportunity to acknowledge the commitment that the Oshkosh Government, the council, and community development staff have demonstrated to the neighborhood revitalization efforts that we're working on here. I have an opportunity to talk to managers of similar nonprofits and other nearby communities, and, you know, they communicate that they don't enjoy the same level of support that we do here, so thank you very much for all of that. Let's begin. We're going to just talk about our lines of business, like the mayor said, what we've accomplished in 2013 and what we hope to accomplish in 2014. So, start at the logical beginning point, which are the neighborhood associations that have been forming in the city. Each year since we've been in Oshkosh, 2011, we've given recognition certificates to a total of six neighborhood associations now, two per year. So, the six associations that are actively working and are recognized in Oshkosh are Algoma Park, Middle Village, Miller's Bay, the North Shore Neighborhood, River East, and Stevens Park. And there are numerous other associations or little group, starter groups popping up. The two main ones that are probably the furthest along are Woodland Park and Menominee South. The interesting thing is that all of these groups lie north of the river, and so we've decided to really make a concerted effort to try and engage some residents on the south side of the city, because we think it's pretty important that, you know, everybody gets a little piece of the action. Okay.
Would it be helpful for you to know the actual neighborhoods, the streets that surround each one of these?
Sure.
A little bit.
Okay.
I'll start, you might have to jump in.
Sure.
Algoma Park is north of town. It goes from Algoma to Vinland and Murdoch to Packer. Middle Village is right near here, goes from Church to Irving, and Main Street, is it Division or Main?
Division.
Main.
To, see, we all have questions. Main to Jackson. Miller's Bay is Hazel to the lake, and New York to Murdoch. North Shore would be Murdoch to, I'm not sure what the...
The shore, the north shore of...
North Shore, so up by one of those Channel Streets.
Okay.
And Murdoch, and then the river and Hazel. River East is Main Street to Bowen, the river to Washington. Stevens Park is Bowen to the lake and the river to Washington. You're going to have to help me with these last three, well, the south side, I think everyone knows who that is. That's a pretty big one, but that's not put together yet. I'm not sure where Woodland Park and Menominee South are.
Woodland Park is also Murdoch. I don't know offhand what their north boundary is, and I probably should know that by now, but they're right next door to the North Shore Neighborhood.
Maybe Elizabeth...
...to the northern boundary, and then it's Hazel to Bowen Street.
Okay. And Menominee South, I believe, is Washington to Irving.
Correct.
And the lake to...
Broad, the railroad track.
Right, Broad, yeah.
I think one of the things that might be helpful is if somebody could come up with a map and send a copy of that, because we'll be talking about that and as it evolves over time, updating.
Absolutely.
And there is a group on the south side that has expressed an interest basically in the President Street area, so they'll be meeting with us on Thursday, correct, Lizzy?
All right. Part of what we do through our community building and engagement line of business is resident leadership development. So, we provide training and try to build the capacity of the resident leaders that emerge in the neighborhoods. So, as the staff person for Neighborhood Works Badgerland, I staff the Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhood Alliance, which is a group that we kind of started of representatives from each of the existing neighborhood associations, and they come together just to share ideas, keep informed on what's going on, and make decisions as necessary. Recently, we just approved a committee charter, which kind of lays out the whole process. So, as new neighborhood associations come into existence, we can recruit representatives from those too, so I think that we are almost ready to move a second time to bigger meeting space, which is exciting. So, we also each year send a group of between six and seven resident leaders to the National Neighborhoods, the Neighborhood Works America Community Leadership Institute, and it's held at the end of October and each year, when we go to a different city each year. As staff people, Dominic and I go out and solicit funds so that we can, you know, provide the hotel, the registration, and the airfare for everybody to get there and back. So, each time that we go there, we are able to develop an action plan. So, we go, we participate in workshops and focus groups, and we go on tours of the city. We get to interact with people who are doing the same kind of thing all over the nation. We bring that information back in the form of an action plan, where we get, kind of come up with what is it that we want to tackle this year. So, the first year, the Bowen Street Triangle is what we refer to it as in Stevens Park. It's that right-of-way that's bounded by Wagu, Bowen, and Mill?
Mill.
Mill Street. So, we were able to get that all landscaped and looking nice, and now I think that the Neighborhood Association is working towards signage. They actually have been doing some fundraising to cover the maintenance that's involved with keeping up with the plants and the watering and et cetera. So, that was a fun project. And then last year, the graphic that you see here, well, actually from 2012, which just happened in 2013, was we held a Creating Healthy Neighborhoods workshop in Oshkosh, where thirty residents from all over the city came to learn about what healthy neighborhoods are and best practices for starting workshops. And as a result of that, two new neighborhood associations did form. And we also have a really nice manual now that we can provide to emerging groups that kind of lay those steps out and provide some pretty nice assistance, so that they're not kind of scratching their head going, you know, where do we start? Let's see. And then we have the, we have opportunities to learn from our peers through the Neighborhood Works America network. So, last year, your very own Steve Cummings went to Lincoln, Nebraska, for one of those peer site learning visits. So, in total, in 2013, we actually provided training to thirty-seven residents. All right. Also last year, Neighborhood Works America requested that all Neighborhood Works organizations conduct what they called a community impact measure. And so, we narrowed it down and decided that we would conduct this three-part survey in the Algoma Park neighborhood. We used resident volunteers, so the neighborhood really came together and got the manpower needed to collect two-hundred-five survey interviews, conducted a hundred parcel-level observations, and then all forty-six blocks of the neighborhood did visual physical observations for. And let's see, well, the results of that were that people in that neighborhood are really confident, it is very strongly owner-occupied, and of the renters that were surveyed, like eighteen out of twenty of them said that they would be willing to purchase a home in that neighborhood, so that's really encouraging. The big, so like I said, the big takeaways were that it seems that people really like living there, they just aren't really aware of the Neighborhood Association and therefore aren't really participating specifically with, you know, neighborhood improvement activities. So, one of the things that we'd like to do in response to the survey data is work with the Neighborhood Association to not only market the neighborhood, but also increase the resident involvement in their neighborhood association.
If I can ask, what else is the survey asking? What other kinds of data are you getting from the survey results?
Oh, we got a lot of, you know, demographic data, based on like age, race, length of residency, perceived sense of safety, gosh, there's a lot of it. And actually, I forgot to mention, but we do have a complete analysis. It's all done now, so I can make that available.
Great.
As well. Yep, I'll get it to you for sure.
Over the years we've been here, this is really the second survey we've conducted. The first survey was from the whole east side, and we also, from that survey, we were able to benchmark things, like how many people like living on the east side, or what were some of the problems on the east side. Then after a few years, we can go back and survey that same neighborhood and see if things are getting better.
Okay, great.
So, that's exactly what the second round, it was just kind of mandated from the national network this time, but it's going to serve as a baseline, so we'll go back in 2015 and do it all over again, and see if things, you know, really, I mean, there's not a whole lot of room for improvement there, is what we found, but if things could stay the same, that would be really, really great.
Well, the benchmarking, at least will allow you to ensure that things aren't declining or...
Absolutely, yeah, no, that would be...
Shelley, if I could also ask, with the observations that are done, what, both, you said property observations and then neighborhood observations, but what does that mean? What goes into an observation? What are you observing?
Well, the Neighborhood Association themselves actually chose the one-hundred parcels that they wanted to observe, so those lie pretty close to Tech Miller Park, because that was kind of a central point for their neighborhood and kind of the central focus that they were working on improvements at that park. So, they wanted to see, they stood, you know, just what they could see from the sidewalk, not walking onto anyone's property, but they look at, you know, what the physical conditions of the property look like. So, it's everything from, are there gutters on the house, you know, is there chipped and peeling paint, does the roof need to be repaired, you know, what is the, what is the condition of the houses and how are the properties being maintained? So, is it really overgrown with weeds? And turns out, houses are in pretty good shape. There are a few that maybe need, you know, a little trim paint or, you know, some minor repairs, but there's nothing, there was nothing really major that emerged from those specific parcel observations. And so then we just did the same basic thing at the block level, so looking at it block by block, you know, what are the conditions like?
Okay.
And overall, they're good.
Great. And then in theory, you'll be able to go back and check that in so many years to see what the trend has been stable or getting better or getting worse.
Right, right.
You stated that you had a problem, that people were unaware, and you wanted to market and increase resident involvement. Do you have plans in place on how you want to go about that?
Yeah, we want to, that's, okay, I'm going to digress a little bit, back up a little bit and give you a little extra information. So, last year at the Community Leadership Institute, one of the residents from Algoma Park had a great idea that, why don't we try to partner with real estate agents who have listings in our neighborhood, so that, you know, homes for sale or vacant or foreclosed homes, and see if we can do some curb appeal improvements, just, you know, some minor stuff, put some planters out, make the place look welcoming. And then the neighbors themselves would work with the real estate agents to host open houses. So, our plan is to develop some marketing materials that are centered around the neighborhood, so not only would they be marketing the home, but the neighborhood themselves. And then in addition, they want to, the target house that they choose to do these curb appeal improvements, they want to approach the surrounding residents, because they're, those are the folks whose property values are being impacted by vacant and, you know, declining housing stock. So, that would be one way that they would, you know, try to engage some new people.
Are these techniques that you've used in the past on previous neighborhood associations?
No, not necessarily.
At least not in the city. They've been used other parts of the...
They're being used other places, you know, we specifically have not done this yet, so it'd be a new thing. And actually, we're not focusing to do those activities just in Algoma Park, but, you know, in all of our partner neighborhoods, if there's interest in doing things like that.
Thank you.
It's been interesting with the different neighborhood associations, the needs and the goals and the differences in the neighborhoods. Algoma Park, one of the reasons the association was developed to begin with was this Tech Miller Park was starting to deteriorate a little bit, and the families got together that had young children, and they wanted to improve the playground equipment, the baseball diamond, tennis court, whatever was there. So, as they got together and were able to, I'll say, band together and become a neighborhood association, they had a little bit more influence in, with the city making decisions. And that happened also with Miller's Bay Neighborhood, and I think Stevens Park has done a good job of us getting everybody together and making more of an impact when they come and they need or desire something from the city.
So, yeah, in return for doing all that hard work over the summer last year, we were able to generate, or to get some great neighborhoods funding approved. Some of you may remember giving the okay to that, and they couldn't be happier with the new playground equipment, and they're just waiting for it to get a little bit warmer, and then they plan on throwing a spring fling, a celebration in the park, and do like a ribbon cutting and things like that, so make sure to let everybody know when that happens.
Once the, it was approved by the city to put in some new playground equipment, they had an event, and they had the city or whoever was supplying the equipment brought in posters and looks of what the new park would, and so the Neighborhood Association had like a little get-together, the kids all came, and it was really a neat little neighborhood activity, just to see what they're new, they're anticipating of the new, of the new playground equipment. It was neat.
Yeah. All right. So, lastly, for community building and engagement, we logged over two-thousand volunteer hours in 2013. Those hours were associated with things like neighborhood meetings, participation in the Healthy Neighborhood Alliance, planning their events, planning their projects, participating in training, and actually implementing their projects. So, we're pretty confident we're going to top that number, but I was pretty impressed, because when I, you know, kind of broke it down by week, you know, it's like we have a full-time staff person working for free on neighborhood stuff every week, so, and they don't get vacation or anything. All righty. All right, so then we're moving on to real estate development. As you all know, we completed the renovation of 633 Mount Vernon last year and sold it to lovely Travis and Jessica that are pictured here with their keys. So, the renovation was completed, we successfully sold it to some first-time home buyers, and they really couldn't be happier with their new home. In fact, I spoke with Jessica yesterday, coincidentally, and I asked her how everything was going, and her exact words were, "I love my house." So, I think that the project was a huge success. So, that brings us to our second real estate development project, which is at 667 Bowen. We went ahead and we completed the pre-development process. We hired T.R. Carroll's Architecture Firm to do some design drawings for us. We sent the work out for bid, we selected a contractor, we have hired him, and we anticipate that substantial completion will occur on or about September 1st of this year. So, it'll be exciting to finally see some visible changes to that property.
The first one we did, 633 Mount Vernon, that house was given to us from the city for a dollar, and it had been vacant for a long, long time, and it was in really, really bad shape. And when we sold it, we sold it for a better-than-average price on Mount Vernon Avenue, was one of the, now it's one of the higher-priced houses. So, the turnover from no tax, property tax income, to where it is now is a, it's a huge success for the community. It's a really big plus.
All right. And then that brings us to our homeownership services. We provide HUD-approved homebuyer education through an online format. So, it's really convenient, it's very inexpensive, and easily accessible to most people who oftentimes that kind of education is a requirement for mortgage underwriting. We have actually, I think, two or three sites, so the numbers that are listed on this slide are the total statewide through all of our websites. But in Oshkosh specifically, we provided that homebuyer education, well, let's start with Winnebago County, thirty-four individuals utilized the Oshkosh website for homebuyer education, and in Oshkosh in particular, fifteen homebuyers used the Oshkosh-specific website for their homebuyer education. I did a little bit of number crunching and taken a closer look at who these folks are, and discovered that the average family income for the folks who are taking the education is about $40,000 a year, just under. Their average family size is 2.6, so seems like it's either a young couple or maybe a young couple with one child. But the average pre-approval, mortgage pre-approval amount was $104,230. So, we are, through this platform, able to generate some new, some significant new investment as far as, you know, new financing and new homebuyers in the city.
Many times when couples or people are looking to buy a home, they go to get their financing, the mortgage place or the bank asks them to get homeowner and homebuyer education. So, there's different places you can get this homebuyer education. The Neighborhood Works America website is, what, $35?
Mm-hmm.
It's, and sometimes it can be up to $600. So, the price is very economical, and it can be done online. A lot of other places you have to go on a Saturday and go through a class, and it's just much more complicated. So, the people of Neighborhood Works America have done a great job in offering this to everyone in the United States, and hopefully that'll grow in Oshkosh.
All right. So, looking forward to 2014, our goals are to assist with the creation of two new neighborhood associations, and I'm pretty confident that one of those is going to be on the south side. And I'm also pretty confident that it's going to probably exceed two this year. Word is getting out there, so we want to conduct some of those confidence-building activities in Algoma Park and our other partner neighborhoods. Obviously, complete the renovation and sale of 667 Bowen Street, and we're actively seeking an additional property for renovation, acquisition and renovation, waiting for the right house in the right spot at the right time, kind of thing. And then we also want to, we're to strengthen and increase our local partnerships, and by that, I am kind of saying but not saying, we have a pretty lofty private fundraising goal for this year. We'd like to raise $75,000 through Oshkosh local businesses and foundations, so...
Our budget, annual budget is about $210,000. In the past, we've, well, this year's higher, but we've gotten about a third of it from Neighborhood Works America, and we've gotten about a third of it from all the grants that the city has, HUD, what's the other one?
CDBG?
Yeah.
CDBG.
And we're going to try and get another third of it from private. We've had many of the local foundations, as you're all familiar with, the Community Foundation and some other foundations have helped us in the past, but this year we're going to do some more fundraising, and so far, we've made a few calls, and everybody's been very, very excited about helping us, so that's good.
Yeah.
What comes...
Go ahead.
I was going to ask, what comes of the proceeds then that the organization generates from, like, for example, the sale of the renovated home, or some of the, if there are some fees, some charges for services that are provided, how does that figure into the budget?
Well, specifically, the proceeds from the sale of the home is considered program income, and so that is just rolled into the next project. So, that's money that we have to go ahead and do the next big project.
And those are used specifically for renovation projects and...
Yep, yep. We found that with the block grant money, that's kind of the easiest way to get to use it. You can't get too creative with block grant dollars. And then the, a lot of it is used for, you know, providing the type of training that we're able to provide to residents, you know, supporting the neighborhood associations in various capacities, providing technical assistance and staff support, and then a lot of it is for administration. Any other questions? That was the end of my slideshow. I like to keep it short and sweet.
Let me follow up a little bit on Sean's. When you sell a house like on Jefferson, is there a goal in terms of making money on it to some extent? In other words, like you bought the house, you got the house for a dollar, there was a lot of work that went into that house.
Yeah.
And some of these neighborhoods putting a lot of work into the house isn't going to produce a real high sale price, if you had a reasonable sale price.
Right.
But is there a goal? I mean, you take that money and put it into the next project, but you also had expenses, so what was the net?
Okay.
I mean...
All right, yeah, I knew somebody was going to want to...
Is it an objective to have a net?
Get down and dirty and talk numbers, right?
So, you can scale it up over time.
Sure. Well, first, to answer your first question, the goal is not, we're not flipping houses specifically to make a profit. We are working to improve neighborhoods, to cultivate demand in the residential real estate market in some neighborhoods that oftentimes are being bypassed for newer, bigger, whatever. So, when we do a real estate project, we are trying to provide the type of amenities that modern families are looking for, to be able to attract them back to these downtown neighborhoods. So, making a profit is great. If we don't, though, whatever, you know, okay, so for example, with Mount Vernon, these are really rough numbers, round numbers, the total project costs for that were $157,000, and that includes everything, construction costs, carrying costs, closing fees, marketing fees, all of it. The sale price was $117,000, and so that gave, left us a gap of $40,000 that we left behind in that neighborhood. However, we call that our social investment in the neighborhood then, because that's the kind of investment that it's going to take to really create these healthy neighborhoods, these neighborhoods of choice that people really want to live in. And, you know, we're in competition of these neighborhoods that we've been talking about. We're in competition with not only other neighborhoods in the city, but other neighborhoods in other communities too. So, what we're trying to do is really provide what the modern homebuyer is seeking and get them to choose Oshkosh.
Can I answer your question?
I understand all that, I'm just trying to see what the goal is, if it's to break even or not, because obviously you made a little money on it, you can scale activities up. If you lose money on it, you're going to have a deterioration in the scale of what you can do. So, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
Break even, and it doesn't go either way, so...
Since these two projects, we've come up with a protocol for evaluating a project or a property before we acquire it to. In other words, what's the, the purchase price, what do we have to invest, and what can we sell it for, so...
That's sort of what I was asking.
Yeah, there's now a protocol in place, a protocol procedure for evaluating a property.
That's, that's what I was asking.
Just a couple of questions. Not too long ago, council approved Middle Village's action plans. Do you anticipate the other neighborhood associations putting together an action plan and bringing it forward? You mentioned, you know, Tech Miller Park, they've kind of, it was focused on the playground equipment, we funded money through the Parks Department, et cetera. Do you anticipate any other action plans coming forward to the council in 2014?
Yeah. I don't know about in 2014. I think that that would be an awesome thing if they could achieve that, but sometimes the planning process, I think, takes a little time, especially when you're trying to really get buy-in from, you know, a nice diverse group of the neighborhood. But I do know that community development staff has met with resident leaders from a couple of other neighborhoods to discuss the potential for developing a plan, and there's definitely interest in that.
Okay. And you focus, obviously, on, you know, single-family homes and things like that. Obviously, Middle Village had a lot of rental property. How much of, do you spend on working with rental managers, if any, or rental owners to prove the quality of their property? to prove the quality of their property or things like that? Or do you really just focus basically on single-family homes?
Well, we've been really.
Because we have a high, high number of rental properties overall in the city of Oshkosh.
Right. And as, as a fairly new organization, you know, we're only three years old in the city, so we've had to spend a lot of time with relationship building and trying to get, you know, the residents engaged. And one of our goals is always homeownership promotion. So, yeah, our focus has been on the homeowner.
Or owner occupied.
Yep, yep. There was one case that we assisted a homeowner with his rental property, which was right next door to him. And then we, we looked at that and said, "Well, really, this, this person is doubly invested in the neighborhood." So it was a worthwhile project. So, yeah, we do, we'll do some stuff with rentals, but, but the person has to be right there in the neighborhood too, owner.
And then I think the first year or two, you did a lot of grants out for home improvements. You anticipate that occurring in 2014?
Yep.
A grant cycle?
Yep.
And are you gonna be, how are you gonna advertise that? Or are you planning on advertising or how do you go about doing that, I guess?
Well, we just.
Citizens don't.
We just got the okey dokey to do another round of grants for this year. There are gonna be a few changes to the program where previously we had some less restricted dollars to work with. This time it's that, that community development block grant dollars. So income limitations are gonna apply. Marketing, as far as marketing, it's kind of a double-edged sword and I go really back and forth with it, like, do I contact the newspaper? Because then I'm getting phone calls from.
Everybody.
Everywhere. And so I'm thinking, you know, we'll, we'll try to promote it through the neighborhood associations first.
I know you work very closely with Habitat for Humanity. How does that relationship kind of work with NeighborWorks?
Um, well, you know, the relationship, we're always trying to keep in contact with each other and we're, we're still seeking that exact right project that's, you know, that's gonna benefit everybody. And there are a lot of just little mechanical thing, mechanical glitches that have prevented us from being able to go forward with some of the projects that we thought might work. But we're still, you know, always looking for, for the way that.
Steve, we've also, we've also talked with the Fox Valley Technical College about collaborating on a rehab, both NeighborWorks, Habitat and the Technical College.
Okay.
On a collaboration going to keep the rehab cost down.
One final question. As you move forward, what other assistance do you think the city or the council can, can give you to continue to grow?
Well, we've discussed this and there's the possibility that perhaps their donation of property. We've also discussed with the potential with, with Bowen Street as an example, we intend to market that as an owner occupied duplex. However, if we can't find that right buyer that fits all the rules and the regulations, then we're willing to just, to manage that property, to be the landlord, so to say, so to, yeah, so to speak. And I think that we could set a really good example on the right way to own and manage rental properties. And then that would give us an income source too. So that's, that's another way that we've talked about the city being able to help us.
There's a number of things that are happening in the Middle Village area with the city and with the neighborhood association and NeighborWorks can help a lot through that.
Okay, good, very good.
If I could just throw one thing in, one thing that NeighborWorks does real well, in my opinion, is that they kind of raise the bar when it comes to the rehab of the properties and they were helpful in coming up with the design standards that we even implemented in some of the projects that we've seen NeighborWorks do in other communities. I think it matches exactly what the city's hoping for, infill projects or rehabilitation projects. So I think that's part of maybe some of the investment we, we put into a property to show a neighborhood of what redevelopment or restoration should be looking like in a, in a neighborhood. So I wanted to highlight that.
And just to build off of the comment that you made earlier and Alan's comment that he just made you, you know, in answer to the mayor's question about the, the net, you used the planning term, the, the money we left behind, the $40,000 we left behind. Is that known as a, a measurement too, a barometer, as we go forward and we renovate these neighborhoods in the future? That the goal would be that we have less and less money we leave behind? And then those neighborhoods are renewed to a point where they are sustainable and then maybe even successful?
I wanna say yes.
Yeah.
But, but. In order to make that happen, we would probably have to scale back our renovation. And then we would not be working toward our stated goal of creating neighborhoods of choice in Oshkosh. Because we really see it that, you know, it's not just that house and that homeowner that receives the benefit, it's the entire neighborhood. And then ultimately, the entire community of Oshkosh will see that benefit because, you know, we're trying to set that bar high.
Right.
To raise other property values. So, that being said, perhaps the city's return on investment from increased property tax value might.
Over time, I agree. Over time, that'll happen, but not, it doesn't happen overnight.
But I understand.
But I think over time, we're gonna have to get some of those measures and have some metrics there so that in five years or 10 years, we can say, "This approach works," or "This approach does not work."
Sure.
Value doesn't go up, you know, more than basic rates of inflation.
Mm-hmm.
Then we gotta say, we gotta rethink some strategies.
Right. Oh, yeah.
Need some longer-term metrics.
Oh, yeah.
Program.
Nothing that we do is linear, you know? It's always kind of a moving target. We're, that's the, that's the advantage of, of being the nonprofit, you know, community development corporation is that we, we can be flexible and, and change strategy pretty, be quickly and easily.
And the first projects sometimes can be the most difficult to.
Oh, yeah.
I answered your question, there will be a protocol for how we acquire and rehab a project. So there will be a measurement.
Okay, we only have five minutes left. Deb or Tom?
Do you have any? You guys have any, any floor time yet? So I wanna make sure anybody wants that and otherwise we can just throw out a couple other questions. Here's a few more.
Well, you, you covered the questions that I had and Sean as well, but it sounds like we'll get some additional information and the map, I think, would be a great idea. Be very helpful.
We have the map, that's, we just didn't put it in the packet. That's easy. That's real easy.
Awesome.
I'll tell you later.
Other questions? Council members or staff or?
Well, the one thing that we didn't really talk about, you talk about our investment in the community. The grants that we've given out, how many, 36 maybe over two years?
No, 50.
50. We've given out $50,000, approximately $50,000 grants to 50 different households. We've, our return on that is, what happens is we'll give a homeowner $1,000 if they give us the receipts and everything's approved and we take pictures and everything. So everything's kosher. We'll go back and we'll look at the investment, the, what finally happened and the average one is, what, $5,000?
It's five times our investment is usually in added value. And we calculate added value by, you know, additional financial resources contributed by the homeowner, you know, their labor and then also the, the confidence and the, the social connections that are developed. So we're looking at about five times the added value in the neighborhoods through that program, so.
And just a clarification, because you talked about the different neighborhood associa, they do not have to be in a neighborhood association to qualify for your grants for home improvements, correct?
That is correct, but our priority would be to.
Be those that are in the neighborhood associations first. Okay.
I think only one person was not within the boundaries of an existing association last year, but she was right around the corner from our Bowen Street property.
Correct.
So sometimes that can be a good mechanism to maybe starting a new group somewhere or two.
Sure. I, I was curious and I, being a resident of the south side and hoping to see some neighborhoods start up there, have, have the development of the neighborhood associations on the north side been largely kind of a domino effect? I mean, has, has it been a case where an adjacent neighborhood to one that starts up sees what's happening and that's kind of how the ball gets rolling? I know, I, I mean, for the most part, a lot of these are contiguous, I, I guess with the exception of Algoa Park. But is, is, if, is there hope that if, if one or two get going in the south side, that the rest of the south side will, will?
Oh, yeah.
Stumble like?
I think that the goal is to have the entire city be a city of neighborhoods, so.
That's job security on that one.
Yes, that, that would be my goal. I, I don't know if it's written anywhere, but I think every neighborhood would deserve a neighborhood association and.
Oh, yeah.
The, the neighborhoods on the north side seem to be most receptive, but there are people on the south side who are starting to, to see what's going on on the north side and starting to see some things that they like to see on their south side neighborhood to be improved. So I think there is an opportunity and once you get that first one going, I think you're right, it is kind of a domino effect.
And if someone wants to start a neighborhood association, the best is to contact you at NeighborWorks or Alan in the planning department.
They're one, we're all working together, so.
Throw your phone numbers or emails out there quick while we're on TV yet.
All right, well.
Some people there watching.
You can reach me at 230-6766 or via email at shelly@nwbadgerland.org.
Okay.
And, oh, you can come like our Facebook page too.
About how many people do you look for before you start to take them seriously in forming a neighborhood association?
You know, sometimes it's just two people, but they know that, "Oh, well, I can go out and, you know, talk to this neighbor and that neighbor." And it really develops organically and pretty quickly. You know, they just need, I guess, some, some, know that there's some support there. Once they get those folks together, then we can really help them, you know? That core group can do a lot of outreach then, so. Yeah, it needs to be more than one person though. I've, I've seen plenty of resident volunteers get pretty burnt out, you know, when they feel like they're digging a hole.
Thinking it all on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'd like to thank Bill for being here tonight. The issue of focused neighborhood development is really a relatively recent concept in, in Oshkosh. Very needed concept. The council, developing its strategic plan, it'll be three years this summer, I think, identified as one of the six major strategic objectives. We're talking about doing another strategic plan this summer. Neighborhood development will continue as one of the strategic objectives. Well, it's a, it's, it's an issue for this community and I think it's more and more recognized, more, more and more people are buying into it in, in lots of ways. We thank you for your work. We look forward to working with you in future years. Thank you.
Thank you.
End of the meeting. We do have a council meeting in 16 minutes, so.